Okay, very good. And this is the meeting of the Fall River Planning Board. Wednesday, May 12th, 2021, 5:30. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. And we have participated remotely. Mario Luciola.
Yeah.
Elizabeth Andrade.
President.
Gloria Pacheco. John Ferreira. John here. John Sykes here. John?
Where did he go?
Well, we'll give him another minute. Well, I'm Cynthia Savigny. I'm here. We also have William Kenny, our city planner. We have Christine Sylvia, our recording clerk. We also have Alex Mello from Fall River Government TV. And we are waiting just to hear from John Ferreira. Bill, do you want to take item number one while we're waiting?
Yeah, we have a quorum. I think we can go ahead.
Okay. Well, item number one is the Courtney Street roadway improvement. A consideration of the proposed improvement plan for Courtney Street as described in a plan entitled roadway improvement plan prepared for the Bristol Pacific Homes by SciTech Incorporated, dated February 3rd, 2021, as set forth in a proposed roadway agreement by and among City of Fall River, Bristol Pacific Homes Incorporated, and Stein Realty and Development Corporation. This has been tabled from our March 17th, 2021 meeting. Bill, do you have an update on this?
Yeah, very quickly, I think the most recent news was that we had asked the legal department for a determination as to the proper way for the city to take control of Courtney Street once the improvements are made by the developer. And without boring you with the details of the various alternatives, I could tell you that that was referred to Matt Thomas, attorney Matt Thomas, to give his opinion. We got a proposal from him on Tuesday morning. And it's under review by the law department now. And if the law department is happy with it, then we will have it sent to the developers to review. So I sound like a broken record on this, but once again, I would ask you to please table this until the next meeting. And if we know the exact date of that, we should announce it now.
Okay, my next meeting would be on June the 9th.
Okay, so I'd ask you to please table this to June 9th for a further update.
I make a motion to table item 01 to June 9th for an update from Director Bill Kenny.
A second.
Okay, we'll have a roll call and Mario Luciola.
Yes.
Elizabeth Andrade.
Yes.
Gloria Pacheco.
Yes.
I'm Cynthia Savigny. I said yes, and we are still waiting on John Ferreira's arrival. Item number two, we have the Lexington Estates subdivision. We have a status report by our city planner, Mr. Kenny, regarding the work remaining to be completed at Lexington Estates subdivision. This also was tabled from our March 17th, 2021 meeting. Bill?
About a week, maybe two weeks ago, the developer actually started some work on the uncompleted roadwork in that subdivision. The reason for the delay up to this point has been that we had to wait for the asphalt plants to reopen on a seasonal basis. So even though we first started discussing this several months back, it's only been now in April that it's possible to move forward with the roadwork. The work started. City Inspector Dennis Silva went out to check the quality of the work and found that some work was being done in the middle of a rainstorm, which involved some concrete work and the inspector directed them to stop that work because he was concerned that the concrete wouldn't stay put because of the rain. And that delayed it. And I believe they started work again Monday of this week, but Inspector Silva's been away for a couple of days. He'll be back tomorrow, so I can get an update from him at that point. I'll tell you also that in the meantime, we asked Mr. Cifori to provide us with a deposit of funds to use for inspection. In a project like this, we typically hire an independent party to go out and inspect the quality of the work as it goes forward. And we've arranged for a firm that does some work for the engineering department to do that. We asked him for a $10,000 deposit towards that. He gave us five. Wasn't happy about that. We're going to revisit that issue fairly soon because once work starts moving quickly, those funds can get depleted pretty quickly. So we're on top of that. We're going to see what happens in the next several days. And frankly, I want to see some significant progress down there in the next several weeks, or we're going to have to revisit what we want to require of him. So that's pretty much it. And I'll ask you to table this to the next meeting to that specific date. Was it June 9th?
Yes, it was.
That's my suggestion, table to June 9th for a further report.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I motion that.
A second. A second.
Okay, and we will have a roll call on this as well. Mario Luciola.
Yes.
Elizabeth Andrade.
Yes.
Gloria Pacheco.
Yes.
I'm Cynthia Savigny. I say yes. So this item, the Lexington Estates subdivision, has been tabled to our June 9th meeting. Okay, and now we have item number one. We will be opening a public hearing on this matter. This matter is the street acceptance Detroit Street extension. And it's request acceptance from Stevens Street to Omaha Street. It's referred by the city council on March 23rd, 2021. And Mr. Kenny is going to give us a brief description on what this is all about.
Thank you. What's happening here is that the petition was filed with the city to have that section of Detroit Street accepted as a public way, accepted by the city. Acceptance means that the city would then be responsible for maintaining it and repairing it and so forth. So the petition was filed with the city council and the normal procedure was followed, which is for the city council to refer it to the planning department for an opinion as to whether or not, excuse me, whether or not the city should accept the street and therefore accept responsibility for it. In the meantime, the city engineer has advised me that his records show that the developer of Lexington Estates is actually responsible for the paving of that street and has not done so. I don't think that we were aware of that initially when we started talking to Mr. Cifori. The engineer has said that he's made him aware of that. So that adds something to the mix here. And beyond that, the engineer searched his records and believes that acceptance of this street may have already taken place. So it was a little confusion on the record at this point. And the engineer is going to research this and let me know what we should do with it. I think ultimately, the street should be accepted. I don't think we necessarily want to accept it before the developer does what he's required to do as far as, you know, fixing the street and bringing it up to proper standard. But in the meantime, while the engineer is looking into this and hopefully get back to us, I think we ought to table it to the next meeting. But for tonight's purpose, since this is a public hearing, we're required to hold a public hearing on the question. If there's anybody attending this meeting remotely, we should give them an opportunity to comment.
Okay, and so at this point, we will solicit comments from any members of the public who wish to be heard at this time. Is there anyone wishing to speak at this time? Not hearing anyone. Any board members have any comments on this matter at this time?
A question to you, Bill. This actually is Mr. Cifori also part of the estate that he's supposed to repay or fix all of these streets and so on and so forth.
Yeah, this is actually part of the approval that was made for the Lexington Estates subdivision.
Yes, because in my research, that I researched all of the paperwork that got descended. Yeah, I found it very interesting that Detroit Street, like you said, is a questionable right now for the city, except the previous or in the future. But I agreed to table for the next meeting. I'll make a motion to table.
I think we ought to technically make a motion to close the hearing first and have that voted on, and then you can table.
Yes. We are we are looking for a motion, a vote.
Our motion.
This public hearing. I will.
A second.
We're going to do a roll call on this. And Mario Luciola.
Yes.
Elizabeth Andrade.
Yes.
Gloria Pacheco.
Yes.
I'm Cynthia Savigny. I vote yes. And so that portion of the public meeting has been closed. Now we will have a vote over a motion to table this matter to the next meeting. Bill, will it be ready for the next meeting?
I've got my fingers crossed.
I make a motion. I make a motion to a table for the June meeting.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that motion. Sorry.
It's okay. Again, we will have a roll call. Mario Luciola.
Yes.
Beth Andrade.
Yes.
Gloria Pacheco.
Yes.
I'm Cynthia Savigny. I vote yes. Now we have item number two, which is a memorial dedication. We will now be opening a public hearing on this matter. This is a memorial dedication pursuant to Section 66-186 of the Revised Ordinance of the City of Fall River, a request to consider recommendation of approval to post a plaque in memory of Roy Rogers, late of Belmont Street, on a wall owned by the city at the westerly end of Remington Street. Bill, would you like to discuss this with us?
Sure. As you may know, there is a procedure in our ordinances by which citizens of the city can petition the city to honor people, to make memorial to people who have been significant in the life of the community. And the procedure is that a petition is filed with the city clerk. City clerk transmits it to the city council. Routinely, the city council then refers it to the planning department so that we can review the situation and make a recommendation back to the city council as to whether the request should be granted. And this was a request that was received by us from the city council to honor gentleman Roy Rogers, known to many people in the community. And the proposal was to put some sort of a plaque in honor of him and in memory of him at, as you read, on a wall at the westerly end of Remington Street, which I believe was part of the old Slade's Ferry Bridge abutment. But in any event, I went down to that area, took some photographs. And we've notified the abutters and the proponents of this, that the hearing would be tonight. And what we need to do, I think, is hear from, I see Donald York's picture on the screen. And he was the gentleman that sent me the original correspondence on this. And I imagine he'd like to talk about it, and maybe there's some other folks would like to speak about it. But that's where we ought to go. And after they've spoken, if the board has any questions, we can address that. And then you folks can close the hearing and then make a judgment whether you want to refer this back to the city council for action.
Okay, and so we have comments from members of the public. We have Mr. York. Do we have anyone else here for this item?
Yes, there's actually several people present physically, but not a lot of them are familiar with Zoom. But I could show you a picture of all of them here. We're at the river now. This is Rick, his cousin. And a lot of friends are around here now. But I certainly appreciate the City of Fall River and the planning board for considering this. I have just a short thing I can read to you, something that I sent. And it was actually written by a Fall River resident, Vernon Tripp. Vernon's in Florida right now. He's at the rental car place. He can't get online right now. On May 30th of last year, a loving and lifelong member of Fall River family passed away in his sleep. His name was Roy Rogers. He was 68. He was a true friend to all and is being mourned widely throughout the city. He was an outdoorsman through and through and loved his family dearly. He was more than my cousin. I'm speaking for Vernon Tripp. He was Vernon's cousin. He was my close friend. Every day, Roy would wake up before the sun and drive to the Tonkin River, which is correct, the Slade's Ferry Bridge, Fall Riverside, to drink his coffee. Then he would get a coffee for his wife Carol and bring her a, as she arose from bed. He would fish and be with family and friends very often at this location. It was a special place to him, to me, and others. There's a stone wall here, as Bill mentioned. And we are requesting a plaque to memorialize him here. He was a special man. If we were to bring his wife, who is online right now, I don't think she's going to speak, but she's here. That's Carol Rogers of 50 years, to this spot and reveal the plaque, it would be a modest brief ceremony. Well, this is something I wrote before, but I will get the plaque in which I envisioned to be a small screwed in or bolted to the rock wall. And thanks for making it to the end for anything. Okay, that was the message I wrote to Will, not to William. I did put together a little I don't know if you want to see it, but I could share my screen. It's a little three minute. If you want to see Roy, I have a little slideshow that I have made, and it's only if you wish to see that.
I don't see why not.
Okay. I will share my screen. I'm a school teacher, so I'm pretty good with Zoom. Oh, I haven't used it in my phone. All right, what are you guys seeing right now? You seeing this video now?
Yes.
Okay. So it is playing. That's Roy with his wife Carol. There's Roy sitting on the wall. There's actually music here. That's Roy with his daughter and my near fiance. Oh. That's Roy with a nice striper boat. He's, that's myself with Roy here. I tried to pick most of the pictures from him at the river. That's a lot of his buddies. All of those guys are here now. That's Roy in the winter, just to prove he was here every day. Rain, shine, snow. This is a cross that was made by Christopher Posa and posted at the river. And people came around and would sign the cross. I've got several of these photos. You'll see there's Stacy. We'll just let it run. And so people would just come by and just sign. There's Carol, this widow signing. That's one of his daughters, Emily. That's his sister Dolores, who came from, she lives in Long Island now. But she grew up in Fall River. They all did. Ferlin's here now. That's signed by his brother Jason. That's by his cousin Rick, who's the one sitting next to me now. I didn't, wasn't there when everyone signed, but it was just signed by so many peoples. And it's all the signatures now at this point have been worn off.
For the last 25 years, I've been here every day with Roy.
For the last 25 years, Rick said he's come here every day with Roy. That's Christopher Posa who made the cross. That's Roy with his daughter Stacy. There he is with another striper. There's relaxing on the bench. And that's his buddy Joe Estrella. When the towers were still up. And we were all here when the towers went down. I think this is about the end of it. There's one more. That's just, that's the final spot right there. So I just wanted to share that with you and just to kind of give you a snapshot of who he was and how much he meant. I will stop the share now. And I also wanted to say that Roy was a student of Fall River history. He was immensely knowledgeable about the area dating back all the way to the King Philip War through the Fall River we see today. As we all know, that incorporates quite a few changes. Bottom line, if you wanted to know something about Fall River, just ask Roy. And that's all I wanted to share. I'm not sure if Rick wants to say any words or anybody else. I know Stacy's on, but everyone's a little bit nervous to talk, I think.
Shouldn't be nervous with this crowd.
I found that out from listening to the introductions.
I compliment you. The video was very nice. Super. Very interesting.
I'd just like to know, did he catch that striper right at that spot?
He did. There's a secret decision down here. We're not going to tell you.
No, no secret, no plaque.
Okay, I'll tell you. You gotta reel in fast.
Okay. There being no other members wishing to speak, but Mr. York, if you could provide our office with the names of the people who did attend this meeting, would appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Should I just send that to Bill?
Yes.
Okay, I'll do that.
Yes, and
Name and address. Name and address would be good.
Okay, I'll do that.
Do we have any questions from the board on this matter?
The only thing I want to add, that it will be an honor.
Do you know?
Just to, never met the gentleman, it will be an honor that we have such people here in our city. At some time, we get lost on the way to sight, and I think this is a great honor and I fully support it.
Okay, and at this time, we're going to take a vote to close this portion of the public hearing. So do I have a motion to that?
I make a motion to close this public hearing, this matter.
And do I have a second?
We don't hear Beth's voice, I think.
Beth did second. Yes, so we're going to now
I'm sorry, I second that. Sorry, Cynthia.
It's okay. And we'll take a roll call now. Mario Luciola.
Yes, yes, yes.
And Beth Andrade.
Yes.
And Gloria Pacheco. And Cynthia Savigny, I also vote yes. And now we have closed this portion of the public hearing. We will have a separate vote on whether to approve this matter. And so the matter being the memorial dedication. Do I have a motion from board member on this?
So the proper motion would be to, if you're inclined to do so, to refer it back to the city council with your recommendation that the proponents be allowed to place the plaque. And period. They'll have to present it to, at some point, we'll have to see the plaque and then agree on the size and the exact location, but that's easy.
Okay, do I have a motion to that effect?
I'll motion to refer it back to city council.
Do I have a second?
A second.
And we will again do a roll call. Mario Luciola.
Yes, yes.
Elizabeth Andrade.
Yes.
Gloria Pacheco.
Yes.
I'm Cynthia Savigny. I vote yes, and looking forward to seeing the plaque. Very good.
I want to thank you all very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Good luck.
Have a wonderful night.
Good luck.
Thank you.
And now we have item number three. We have Circuit 2021, 2022, commission member reappointment of John Ferreira. And John's been a member for one year now and looking forward to having him reappointed. Do I have a vote on this?
I make the motion to appoint John Ferreira to our team.
And do I have a second?
I'll second. Beth, I'm sorry.
It's okay. We're on the same boat. It's all good. It's all good.
We'll do a roll call. Mario Luciola.
Yes, yes.
Beth Andrade.
Yes.
Gloria Pacheco.
Yes.
I'm Cynthia Savigny. I vote yes, and congratulations to John Ferreira for being appointed, reappointed to our circuit committee.
And this is what happens when you don't show up at the meeting, you get Yeah.
Maybe we could appoint him to something else, too.
Yeah, go for it. Absolutely. Go for it.
Item number four, we have Form As, their applications for endorsement of plans believed not to require approval. Item number A is file number 21-1498. The owner is Thomas St. Pierre, trustees of Ray Realty Trust. Applicant is Ray Realty Trust. The location is 65 Glaski Street in Manchester Street. And it's assesses map F19 lot 70. Bill, do you have any?
Yeah, the background on this is that if you looked at the plans, I believe there are 12 lots being proposed. All of them have frontage on a public way. None of them have the adequate square footage or frontage for the zoning in the area. But there's a cure for that. They've received a variance from the zoning board of appeals to do this. And I've been out to the site. I think this is a really good project. It's right across the street from a park. It's being built on a site of a former church, which is in the process of being torn down. But it's Tom St. Pierre and Family Homes Construction is the developer. I think this is going to be a real nice project for the neighborhood. For our purposes, they meet the necessary standards, and I recommend that you endorse the plan approval not required under the subdivision control. and I recommend that you endorse the plan approval not required under the subdivision control law.
Any comments from board members?
I think, Bill, answer a question, so I'll make a motion to endorse the file 211498. Lot number F19 lot 70. Make motion for acceptance.
Do I have a second?
A second. Who's winning?
We'll do a roll call. Mario Luciola.
Yes.
Elizabeth Andre.
Yes.
Gloria Pacheco.
Yes.
I'm Cynthia Savigny. I vote yes. Item 4B is file number 21-1499. The owner applicant is Fabio Santos. The property location is 154 Maple Street and the assesses map is 14 lot 28. And Bill?
Yep, this is a, not an unusual Fall River situation. You had a parcel with two existing dwellings on it, both created before the subdivision control law took effect. The procedure that they followed is to ask for a special permit from the zoning board to do this. And that was awarded, that was granted. So everything is in place. There's access to the public way. And the sizes of the lots have been cured by the decision of the Zoning Board of Appeals. So I'm going to recommend that you endorse this plan approval not required under the subdivision control law.
Any comments by the board members?
No, no comment.
Do I have a vote? Motion?
I motion to vote.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, we will again.
I'll second. I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Do you have a second already?
I believe Gloria seconded it.
Okay, fine. Thank you. I didn't hear. That's fine.
We will do a roll call again. Mario Luciola.
Yes.
Beth Andre.
Yes.
Gloria Pacheco.
Yes.
And Cynthia Savigny, I vote yes. And now we have item 4C. This is file number 21-1500. Owner applicant JH Holdings Group LLC. Property location is Mariano Bishop Boulevard and August Street. Assesses map C16 lots 01, 23, 82, 86, and 87.
Folks, this is a project you may have heard about because it was before the Zoning Board of Appeals on a couple of occasions with a slightly, well, not with a slightly, with a significantly different proposal. The intent originally was to do some townhouse development. That was not approved. Then the proposal came along to create sort of a private way on the easterly side of Bishop Boulevard for that part of the property and to create some house lots there. It would have been sort of a condominium structure legally. That was not approved. So the developer has decided to take the path of least resistance and divide up these parcels in a way that does not require any zoning approval. And nor does it require subdivision approval. So I'm going to suggest that you endorse this plan approval not required under the subdivision control law.
Any board have any questions? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion. We accept file number 211500.
And do I have a second?
I'll second that.
And again, we will do a roll call. Mario Luciola.
Yes.
Gloria Pacheco.
Yes.
Beth Andre.
Yes.
And I'm Cynthia Savigny and I vote yes. Item number five, we have the approval of the minutes of our April 14th, 2021 meeting. And at this meeting, Beth, you were absent, so you will not be able to vote on this. But do I have a motion to approve these minutes?
I make a motion to approve the April 14 meeting.
And do I have a second?
I second.
Okay, and so we'll do a roll call and that will be Mario Luciola.
Yes.
Gloria Pacheco.
Yes.
I'm Cynthia Savigny. I vote yes. Beth Andre was absent and John is absent this evening. Okay. We have citizens in court and I believe that we probably have taken care of that earlier in the meeting. But is there anyone to speak? No. Then we have adjournment. So do I have a motion?
Is Beth speaking, but she's muted?
She's trying.
She's trying.
Oh goodness gracious. That would be doing sign language.
Okay, and do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, this is a vote to adjourn this meeting. We'll take a roll call. Mario Luciola.
Yes.
Beth Andre.
Yes.
Gloria Pacheco.
Yes.
I just didn't want my dog barking and you thinking it was me saying yes.
Okay, Cynthia Savigny, I said yes to this meeting is adjourned. And welcome aboard Christine Sylvia.
Yes, welcome aboard.
Watching.
Thank you very much.
First meeting here. Did a great job.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Great night. Thank you.
Good night, everyone.